All right, it is now five P M. And we're going to call to order our December the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one public hearing for the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three school operating budget. And as we call our meeting to order tonight, this is one of the most important tasks we have as a governing body, and that is the facilitation and eventual adoption of the Lynchburg City School Board. And so with that in mind, tonight, we will certainly ask for the approval of our agenda. And as that approval is granted, we will then govern ourselves accordingly as the agenda has presented itself for tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's public hearing?
I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Morrison to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Tross. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. We ask the clerk to call a roll.
Scoop up, Madam Tross.
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Vernon.
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries. End of session.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At our work session, we will have our pledge to the flag, but certainly in this public hearing, we certainly are mindful of all of the things that are going on in our nation and our support for our nation and local community. With that in mind, we will now move into Section C, which is our operating budget discussion, and that we might have the appropriate lead-in. We're going to ask Mrs. Lukanich, Dr. Edwards, to lead us in the first portion of this, and then we will entertain public comments. Dr. Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the first of two public budget hearings. We have another one in the spring after we have compiled the budget. The purpose of this one is to get public input for budget priorities, things that you would like to see the school board discussing and addressing and possibly including in the budget proposal for F Y twenty-three. There are multiple ways to give input. Obviously, tonight is one way to give input. We also had a survey, which we'll talk about a little bit in a moment. We have been collecting input from various meetings, such as our Personnel Advisory Meeting, which is a meeting that I have with at least one rep from each school and at each department. There is a parent advisory, superintendent's parent advisory as well. So we will continue to gather what our community and stakeholders feel are some priorities that we need to be addressing as we craft the 2023 budget. When we get to the work session, we're going to talk a little bit more about the current budget, CARES funding, fund balance, progress on meeting the budget proposal from F Y twenty-two, as well as digging a little bit more deeper into the input that we received today and some of the other input that we've already received. So let me first start with some things that are already, have already been communicated, just so that the public is aware. One of our biggest priorities is staffing, salaries, and benefits. So that's already on the docket for discussion in terms of making L C S the employer of choice and making us more competitive in the market with our counterparts, and also increasing hourly wages for some of our classified transportation employees, as well as looking at teacher salaries in general and staff salaries in general. So that's one thing that is definitely on the table. You've heard me talk a little bit about the Regional C T E Academy with C V C C, and they've opened their program this school year, and they offer some courses that we don't offer in our wonderful C T E program at both Heritage and Glass. So we're looking at possibly partnering with them to offer our students the opportunity to take some courses that they can't take currently in our schools, in our high schools, but they would be able to take there. There's a lot of discussion about early childhood and funding for that. Last year, we piloted a pre-K to three program, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. We have used a lot of the CARES funding, and I will also give you a CARES funding update during the work session, to address learning loss. We have put some new positions in CARES-funded positions to address learning loss, so we'll talk a little bit about that. You heard last session Director Brown give an update on our behavioral strategies and some of the things that we want as we move towards addressing S E L, student mental health, and guidance, and school counselors as well. So those are some things that came up in the budget. From our employees, obviously, some employee perks are some of the things that they asked us to look at, like sick leave payout, increasing bereavement day. There's some request in here for retirees, looking at the veteran staff pay are some of the things that came across from our employees. And parents obviously want programming and access for students. Similar, some of the things that they recommended are in our CARES funding tutoring, mentoring, are in some of our CARES funding. And obviously, each group was concerned about staff salaries. So those are some of the basics that we've collected just in conversation with various groups over the last couple weeks. Ethel Reeves' team, the communication team, put out a survey that was asking just the general public to weigh in on priorities that they feel like this board should be discussing, and I want Ethel to, she's there, to just give us an overview of some of the information that you've already collected from that survey.
Sorry, can you give me one? The information that we have is as of two thirty today. We have fifty-five responses. Sixty-seven percent of those who responded are L C S employees, another twenty percent parents and guardians. We did have a category for those who are employees and parents, and that was nine percent. And then two percent, community members, two percent students. And much of what Dr. Edwards has already shared was also given as input for priorities that we would like to have included, that these responders would like to have included in the budget. The huge majority mentioned raises for staff. Some advocated for increases across the board, while others referenced specific positions such as bus drivers, instructional assistants, special education teachers and staff, counselors, and substitutes. Advocacy for more social workers due to the needs for mental health support. We've had comments related to orchestra funding, with several requests for our high school orchestra teachers being, becoming dedicated, not being split amongst positions. The sub shortages were mentioned, and/or insufficient pay for subs and the staff that they're covering. More alternative education options, especially at the elementary levels. And then a priority mentioned regarding, it just says, there was a note that priorities should be given to personnel, not programs or staff. Some referenced furniture, needing size-appropriate furniture for elementary students. And then there was some potential staffing changes that have been requested. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, we wanted to open it up to our community to offer the opportunity for anybody in the community to address the board and share your public comment for what you think should be our board priorities. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Coleman, because I know some folks may have signed up in advance, but we may have others.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And of course, we have our public comment procedures that we use for such a session as this, and we're going to allow persons who want to speak tonight to have that opportunity to do so. And so the persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behaviors that disrupts the meeting, or intimidates others, or addresses the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. Representatives shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation, and a group may have no more than one spokesperson typically. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is thirty minutes, and so we will govern ourselves accordingly. Of course, we have until six o'clock tonight. And so the first person that we have on record is Phil Stump, and he wants to come in and address us on regards to the budget. Phil?
How are you?
Good evening.
Kimberly Dykortley, and myself are here representing Virginia Organizing.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. I'm also the parent of three children who received an excellent education in Lynchburg City Schools. You may remember that I have appeared before you and some of our other members have to address the issue of restorative justice or restorative practices in education. And the reason, the primary reason for that in Virginia Organizing is to interrupt this school-to-prison pipeline, because exclusionary discipline removes the students from the classroom that they need so much. And restorative practices are a way of preventing that kind of discipline. Exclusionary discipline that removes students from the classroom is probably going to get them involved in the criminal justice system ultimately, too, and that's what we're talking about when we talk about the school-to-prison pipeline. Several of us from Virginia Organizing attended the excellent community conversation presentations by, made by Director Brown and by Deja Womack a couple years ago. They eloquently explained the importance of the shift in disciplinary philosophy, and they emphasized the absolute necessity of having at least one full-time staff member dedicated to spearheading the adoption of restorative practices. Such a person could set in motion training that would be self-sustaining with teachers training each other. At that time, the school board did not include this item in their budget despite our urgent pleas, and then the already bare-bones budget was cut further by city council. Now it appears that L C S has considerably more money at its disposal, especially through the CARES Act. I understand that CARES funding was allocated this last year for additional staff positions. In fact, we heard about that, the behavioral intervention specialists, for example. I would urge you to include a similar request for CARES funding to establish this staff position for restorative practices. I inquired with Dr. Edwards about the cost of funding such a position. It would run somewhere between seventy and eighty thousand dollars, plus the benefits, which are about twenty-eight thousand. I must say that since that time, I had an opportunity to listen to the board meeting, the YouTube video of the board meeting last week. I'm sorry that I didn't have a chance to do it until right before this meeting, so I'm going to be a little off the cuff now in terms of addressing what was said there. First of all, I sympathize very much with Mr. Lewis and the Lynchburg Educational Association about the severity of the discipline issues, especially in the wake of COVID. What I would say is, I am a teacher myself. I taught for over thirty years, but at the college level. However, after retirement, I was a tutor in an after-school tutoring program for children at R S Payne Elementary School. And what I observed there was a temptation to send students who were causing problems to the office. But what I realized is that those were exactly the students who needed to be there the most. I want to say that I was extremely impressed, again, by Director Brown's presentation last week. It just reiterated so much of what she had said before. I want to call attention particularly to that chart that she had up. I don't know if you remember it, but it had four columns, I think, and the right-hand column was the one for restorative practices. And Dr. Gupta asked her what was being done about those, and she said, what she said again was, they're in the initial phases, but there isn't enough money to implement them more fully. So it sounds like we're back to the same question. Could we have a designated staff member who would spearhead these efforts? And the reason I'm saying that is that even though behavioral intervention specialists are a wonderful idea, they're dealing still with the symptoms of problems rather than the root causes. And restorative practices, ironically, even though they're called restorative, are actually ones that have to do with the root causes, and that is inability to resolve conflicts, and conflicts among students, and conflicts between students and staff. And by adopting these practices, we could actually eliminate the need for many of the other sort of corrective practices that often turn out to be punitive in a way that's been proven time and again to be very effective. Restorative practices are effective. Many, many studies have shown this. The problem is you need the money for them, and that's what we have come to ask from you.
Thank you, Phil. And if we have more time, you may can say, but Kim, were you going to say anything?
Thank you for bringing that. Yes, I just wanted to say, I know the Phil Stump looked at the cost. I'm looking at the savings on the back end. Incarceration is close to thirty thousand a year. One-year salary would save three or one from later down the line. So this catch the children as they hit the river prior to getting in the river, let's not wait, let's have that money, it's available now. We need this now. The children need it now. The time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, and thank you, Phil.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Unless the door is open to the outside to allow people in, can we just check and be sure that the doors are open, that the public can come in?
I would be, thank you, ma'am, for helping us with that and whatever we need to do.
Amy's out there.
Amy's out there.
Amy's out there.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pugh. Yes, Phil?
Could I just add one thing really quickly? Virginia Organizing also supports the effort to provide a living wage for all our teachers and staff, especially bus drivers, custodial staff, and others. And the speaker last week who talked about collective bargaining, this would be definitely a way towards that goal, and I support Dr. Gupta's initiative to provide that living wage to all the staff.
Thank you, Phil. Now, we did not have anyone else to sign up officially, but you can come right on up to the mic and govern yourself according to the rules that I have for stated, if you would like to make a comment relative to the budget. Please come forward.
Hi. This is Beverly McCleskey.
Doctor, excuse me, ma'am, go right ahead, but Dr. Edwards is helping me with the time.
Oh, sure.
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry to say I missed the highlights, but I've kind of, just in case it hasn't been mentioned, I'm sorry if I'm repeating anything, but I just want to make sure that the orchestra is a line item on the things that are going to be funded. And I also feel like that the salaries for all the teachers, I'm sure that was mentioned, all the teachers' salaries need to be looked at, bus drivers, anyone that's caring for our children. That's something that, and that the funding, you know, is there for bonuses or retaining or, anyway, I'm sorry I missed it, but those are my thoughts.
You did find, but, and ma'am, for the record, could you please restate your name so that the clerk could have it?
It's Beverly McCleskey.
Thank you. Thank you. Next?
Good evening, Andrew Glover. Good evening, Lynchburg City School Board. I'm actually going to be brief tonight, because I know it looks like we actually have a few others that want to speak. Over the last two years, Lynchburg City Schools has seen just an influx in funding through various federal government CARES programs and acts and other stimulus and grants program, and that spending has been put to use in a variety of ways. We've heard even tonight of different ways that that CARES funding is being used. However, one of the side effects to starting all these wonderful government programs and projects is that once they're started, they're really difficult to sunset. So as you're So as you're about to start planning for the 2022, 2023 school year, I'd really like to ask the school board to take a sensible and really strategic approach to their budget in considering what that looks like in the future, past 2022, past 2023, what steps you're making yourself to prepare for that. Now's the time to start working towards solving how you either support these various CARES programs that you've started or figure out sensible and responsible ways to sunset them. One thing I can guarantee you is that you've been essentially given a blank check that CARES funding has provided you, and that blank check's essentially going to be going away. And unless you start planning for it now, the citizens of Lynchburg really don't want to be the left holding a bag in the future for something that could have been mitigated. So just really want to look in this budgeting process. What are we doing to make sure that we can fund these positions moving forward and which ones can be set up so that they can be successfully sunset without, you know, leaving people high and dry? We got government programs and we need to make sure the ones that need to be shut down are shut down and the ones that need to stay are funded through an operating budget rather than hoping for more grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Appreciate that. We are so excited to have all of you here tonight. This is, we love this. And so if you have something to say, we certainly afford you the opportunity to do so.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Hard to tell. My name is Rebecca Frye. Thank you so much for having this session, including the opportunity for folks to come and comment, not both just in person, but really appreciate the inclusion of the feedback via the form, because I know there are many people who would like to have feedback that they'd like to share but couldn't make it. So we're grateful to have that opportunity to connect with you all as well. I am the mother of one student in Lynchburg City Schools, and he is an elementary school at Bedford Hills. And I am so grateful for the community and the teachers and the staff at that school. I'm grateful to each of you for your time and service that you've put in and care of our community. We certainly recognize, at least I do, that it's been a very challenging, challenging time to be in these positions. So thank you for all of the time and attention you've put into these unique circumstances. I would like to just reiterate some of the comments that have been made and to say that, you know, we really, I like to say this amongst my friends, that the reality is that none of us have probably been operating at our most optimal performance level in the course of this pandemic. And that's not to slight anybody, it's that it's a hard and challenging time. And so for me personally, I am fully and a hundred percent in support of any budget that would go directed to personnel, to staff, to ensure that we don't have a situation where teachers are leaving because they can't even get a break to take a doctor's appointment that might be critical to their own personal health. You know, that there are, you know, not enough staff when people really need to just take a brief timeout and have some time available. I agree, programming is very important, but the critical thing is that we have staff that are able and supported, that are, you know, supported in a way that allows them to continue to do the job that they desire to do, and that that is impacting both them in a positive way, supporting them, but also not impacting our children's ability to be in the classroom as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. While you're talking, we are recording, so we appreciate it. Well, Dr. Edwards appears that we have received all who would like to, one more opportunity for anyone who would like to share during the public comment section. This is a great response here in this building at least for us, and we appreciate it.
And the survey, for those who are listening, is still open. It hasn't closed. So if you're listening and you're not here and you'd like to share, please, you can still go on and fill out our survey. And just for public record, so that folks know, we are collecting as much input as possible this way, but we're also going to be scheduling with the building principals and department chairs, meetings specifically for those buildings, those departments, because while we recognize we're doing school budgets, each school is different and schools have different needs, and we want to make sure that we're being mindful to developing a district budget that encompasses a school budget that is differentiated for those schools and departments for their needs as well. So staff, if you're out there, your building principals or department chair people will be working with you if they haven't already. And I know several schools have already given us a list of things. They've been talking about it, which is great, so that we can do the work that we need to do in terms of putting together a budget that is representative of what our students need and what our staff need.
All right. Thank you very much. I do personally want to say, many of you we've seen throughout this particular year, and we appreciate you. Sometimes it may not always appear that we do, but we appreciate every comment and each of you for the work that you're doing in the community to help us as we seek to provide the highest quality public education to our students. And so thank you for coming out tonight. What is the pleasure of the board now as we are now ready for adjournment? We are to go into a work session. Do we want to recess until six, or would we like to take a brief break and come back? Dr. Nillis?
I suggest we take a brief break and reconvene.
All right. Then if it's okay with you, is brief five minutes or ten minutes? Five minutes and then we will adjourn and come back in five minutes to begin our work session.
Thank you, guys.[1012.48]
Now call to order our
Much more reasonable.
December work session, December the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one of the Lynchburg City School Board. And as we call our, our meeting to order, I do want all of our board members who have looked at our board docs to see the agenda that has been given to us. And with that understanding, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the items listed before us tonight?
I move to approve the agenda.
Moved by Ms. Morrison, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we will approve the agenda for our December fourteenth work session. And any further questions or discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now stand for our pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, the privilege it is to do that every time we have the opportunity to do so. We will now move to section C of our work session. And pursuant to the Virginia Code, section two point two, three, seven, one, one, A, one, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the appointment or promotion of particular officers, appointees, or employees. Is there a motion for us to move into closed meeting for the said purposes?
Move to enter into closed session.
Second.
Dr. Nellis has made the motion, seconded by Dr. Carter. Any further questions or discussion around the closed meeting? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, we will say to the public, we'll be coming back as quickly as we can, and we're going to go up to our room for our closed meeting.
A move that we come out of the closed meeting, second?
The move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we come out of the closed meeting. After the questions, discussion, and now please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Thank you, board. We will now move to Section E of our work session, which is the school board policy discussion. Item one is human resource policy review. Dr. Edwards.
Okay. So this is up for first reading, and there are several in this section that the administrators and attorney reviewed for HR that we are bringing to the school board for first reading. The first set of them, there are some that are VSBA recommendations, and you can see a list of those. Many of those are VSBA continues to update pronouns and change "shall" to, you know, "will" and make some changes such as that. And you have before you all of the policies for the VSBA changes. I think the one most noted is changing things like status of veteran and GB to military status. They should be outlined. Those were pretty straightforward. Did not have anything that I noted that was of concern in any of those. The LCS policies that are up for three-year review, not all of them were up for three-year review, but what we tried to do to keep it together is if we had a policy that was for professional staff, then we also looked for the similar policy that was classified staff. So we have both of them in front of the board at the same time. So you'll see that not everyone has a deadline of three to five years, but it just made sense to bring them together for that. In that group is the reduction in force policy, which I do want the board to just take a very good, close look at. We have not had to do that at all, but should we have to do that? That is one that dictates when we have a reduction in force, there is a callback that we have to follow for certain staff members and individuals. The rest of them, again, nothing. I did not note anything that was major or any concerns, and I don't know if you reviewed them, if you had any specific questions about any of these at this time.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions from the board relative to the human resource policies? Dr. Carter?
I just wanted to know if there was a comparison to the of GCN for the support staff? Are they evaluated yearly or receive any type of evaluation?
Yes, they are, and which one is that one? Hold on. There is one for support staff. Let me look it up for you.
GDI is support staff, I believe, isn't it? Support staff.
What did you say, Mr. Harvey?
I was saying GDI is support staff assignments and transfers. Is that what you're looking for?
No, the evaluation.
The evaluation, yeah. There should be one. I will double-check it.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions while we wait? Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I just had a question. One of the things that was added to the evaluation of the professional staff was evaluations including an evaluation of cultural competency beginning in the year 2022-2023 school year. Do we have an explanation of what that is and how that will be evaluated?
Yeah. So we're still waiting on VDOE. That was in the state, in the VDOE mandate that we got as cultural competency, and they're supposed to do what the approved training is for that because there's a training component and then there's an evaluation component. So standard, I believe it was standard six, which used to be professionalism that you all evaluate me on, that's the one that's changing to equity and cultural competency. So we are still waiting to get the official, this is what it is. We don't have it. We have not changed our evaluation system to match that just yet until we get that information. So that's why there's that timestamp in there for that.
Okay. I guess I'm wondering why we would be changing our policies if we don't have something in place.
Because that is the code. We're supposed to do this, and VDOE is supposed to do their part of it as well. So we're supposed to be evaluating them according to what was passed, but we're supposed to follow the guidelines that's given to us by VDOE to do that.
Dr. Gupta?
In that tuition-remission policy, it says satisfactory grade. Many companies have a B or A before their reimbursement. So do we have a definition of what a satisfactory grade will be?
For our tuition reimbursement, it's a B or better. And we left it as satisfactory because some of the certification programs don't have letter grades, so we'll have to do those on a case-by-case basis. They have to pass or get...
A move that we come out of the closed meeting, second?
The move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we come out of the closed meeting. If there are questions, discussion, please call the roll.
School board member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School board member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senai.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. I would now like for each board member to certify that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter of matters, number one, specifically identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting, and two, lawfully permitted to be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion to the stated code of 2.2-3712D. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School board member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senai.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Thank you, Board. We will now move to Section E of our work session, which is the School Board Policy Discussion. Item one is Human Resource Policy Review. Dr. Edwards.
Okay, so this is up for first reading, and there are several in this section that the administrators and attorney reviewed for HR that we are bringing to the school board for first reading. The first set of them, there are some that are V S B A recommendations, and you can see a list of those. Many of those are, V S B A continues to update pronouns and change shall to, you know, will and make some changes such as that. And you have before you all of the policies for the V S B A changes. I think the one most noted is changing things like status of veteran and G B to military status. They should be outlined. Those were pretty straightforward. Did not have anything that I noted that was of concern in any of those. The L C S policies that are up for three-year review, not all of them were up for three-year review, but what we tried to do to keep it together is if we had a policy that was for professional staff, then we also looked for the similar policy that was classified staff. So we have both of them in front of the board at the same time. So you'll see that not everyone has a deadline of three to five years, but it just made sense to bring them together for that. In that group is the reduction in force policy, which I do want the board to just take a very good, close look at. We have not had to do that at all, but should we have to do that? That is one that dictates when we have a reduction in force, there is a callback that we have to follow for certain staff members and individuals. The rest of them, again, nothing. I did not note anything that was major or any concerns, and I don't know if you reviewed them, if you had any specific questions about any of these at this time.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions from the board relative to the human resource policies? Dr. Carter.
I just wanted to know if there was a comparison to the, of G C N to the, for the support staff? Are they evaluated yearly or receive any type of evaluation?
Yes, they are, and which one is that one? Hold on. There is one for support staff. Let me look it up for you.
G D I is support staff, I believe, isn't it?
What did you say, Mr. Harvey?
I was saying G D I is support staff assignments and transfers. Is that what you're looking for?
No, evaluation.
Evaluation, yeah. There should be one. I will double-check it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions while we wait? Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I just had a question. One of the things that was added to the evaluation of the professional staff was evaluations including an evaluation of cultural competency beginning in the year 2022, 2023 school year. Do we have an explanation of what that is and how that will be evaluated?
Yeah, so we're still waiting on V D O E. That was in the state, in the V D O E mandate that we got as cultural competency, and they're supposed to do what the approved training is for that, because there's a training component and then there's an evaluation component. So standard, I believe it was standard six, which used to be professionalism that you all evaluate me on, that's the one that's changing to equity and cultural competency. So we are still waiting to get the official, this is what it is. We don't have it. We have not changed our evaluation system to match that just yet until we get that information. So that's why there's that timestamp in there for that.
Okay, I guess I'm wondering why we would be changing our policies if we don't have something in place.
Because that is the code. We're supposed to do this, and V D O E is supposed to do their part of it as well. So we're supposed to be evaluating them according to what was passed, but we're supposed to follow the guidelines that's given to us by V D O E to do that.
Dr. Gupta.
In that tuition-remission policy, it says satisfactory grade. Many companies have a B or A before they reimburse. So do we have a definition of what a satisfactory grade will be?
For our tuition reimbursement, it's a B or better. And we left it as satisfactory because some of the certification programs don't have letter grades, so we'll have to do those on a case-by-case basis. They have to pass or get competence or whatever the high rank is for that particular certification. But everything else is a B. If it's a college course, it's a B or better.
I'm assuming it's documented someplace for a credit, you need a B or higher.
That, there's a, for the staff, there is a whole, like a handout, handbook for them to follow. There's an application that they fill out ahead of time, so they have to be pre-approved. Their supervisor has to approve it for that.
Dr. Carter?
And so the clock of the two years starts upon, when they, the grade?
When they finish. So once, because they, they get reimbursed after they complete the course and then the clock starts.
Any further questions relative to these policies for our first view? This would be in a January meeting for a second reading and decision. Looks like it's a lot here. I don't know if anybody wants it to be on the consent agenda or not, but it's.
I was thinking we could. We can always pull it.
If there's no objection, would this be suitable for the consent agenda for our January meeting? All right, and we can pull it if necessary. All right, thank you all very much, and thank you, Dr. Edwards. We will now move to D two, which is Instruction and Program Policy Review. Dr. Edwards and Latonya Brown.
Okay, so similar to H R, I M P met to review several policies and regulations, and they are listed there. I will turn it over to Director Brown.
Good afternoon, Board. The Instruction and Policy Committee are recommending the following conversions, deletions, or updated policies related to instructions and students. Policies to be deleted are policy, excuse me, policy seven dash thirty-three point three, which is student uniforms and regulations. This policy and regulation is no longer in effect. Our students no longer wear school uniforms as they did in the past, and students have not worn uniforms for roughly about two years within L C S at this time. So we're asking that this policy and regulation go up for deletion. Policy seven dash fifty-six, student accident and dental insurance and regulation, seven dash fifty-six fee schedule, we're asking that the board also delete this policy and regulation, being that we do not offer student accidental or dental insurance at this time. This insurance had been offered in the past, and the feedback that I got that no students or, you know, very few students had elected to participate in this accident or dental insurance, therefore, we no longer carried it. So we're asking that this also be deleted at this point. Policy seven dash sixty-six photographs and regulation seven dash sixty-six, I apologize, I pulled at the last minute for us to take back to our team and review one more time, making sure that we have a procedure in place that will match the policy that we were updating. So we will bring that back to the board in January. And regulation R seven dash twelve, school attendance areas, the committee is recommending deletion. Within that policy, it states that the tenant zones be kept on file within the Office of Student Services, and this is not a V S B A requirement. So we're asking that, you know, that we be able to, the Office of Student Services be able to maintain the attendance areas and provide them to the community or whatever stakeholders as needed from our office, and we don't need a policy to do this. We will have that in our office and ready to go at any time after January. And we need to update our schools in the listing as well, and so that will be ready and, ready to go by the next school board meeting. L C updates, we have two of these policies to be reviewed and updated. Policy I K Z, I mean, excuse me, I K C dash R Z, student evaluation and grading procedures. The recommendation was for Section E, senior exam exemptions. The recommendation is to delete the language exam and have the option of being exempt from the final exam regardless of the grade and the course. In our current practice is that all students would either take an A P exam or teacher-created exam, shouldn't the student not be doing well in the course? So regardless, when a student takes this A P class, every student will take an exam. So there is no exemption. So we're asking that that language be deleted. And lastly, Section F for this regulation, we're asking that the S O L language be deleted within this. Students who enter into A P courses typically have met their S O L requirements by the end of their eleventh grade year, and they would only need the reading S O L, which is taken in grade eleven. They also can have the option of doing teacher-created exams for the end of the fourth quarter grades, and they can compute those grades into their final grades as well. And the last policy, I C I D R Z, is up for review, and there have been no changes or recommendations to that policy. So I know I went kind of fast, so does anyone have any questions?
Ms. Morris.
Could you clarify the A P exam part of the policy that you're recommending change? Do all, are all students required in A P classes to take the A P exam?
They're either required to take the A P exam, or they have to take the teacher-created exam.
Currently, they can, they take either, and the change is to just take the A P exam.
Yes.
All right. I just want, so that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, I guess the, the way it's worded too, it says, you know, the, I guess items, that E seven says a student will continue to take the A P exam. I think maybe that needs to be wordsmithed a little bit, just to make, make it clear that they'd take the exam, period. And then, under item F, under item F, I guess they take the A P exam and they can take a alternative assessment?
Dr. Nellis, let me give a clarity, and I apologize. When we're talking about seven, a student in advanced placement course will continue to take the A P exam, okay? In the past, they could be exempt from their final exam in class for that course, okay? And so, right now, we're saying a student in advanced placement course will continue to take the A P exam under the senior exam exemption. So that fits there under E, because we were given exemptions for seniors only at that point. And I just confused everyone.
I got, I got lost. I got lost. I apologize.
I'm lost as well. I'm lost.
So currently, currently seniors have exemptions and may waive at times to take the final exam for the end of course testing. And so there are some exemptions. So if the, you have to look at the student's grade and exemptions on that. They've looked at the absences in the past. And so what they're saying is that even though exemptions apply for seniors, a student that is in the A P course, they still have to take the A P exam as part of the course. You will not be exempted from that A P exam. And so, in lieu of that, the other caveat to that in F is if you are not doing well in that course, you either take the A P exam or you can take a teacher-created exam. That's, that's equivalent.
All right, I'm gonna stay with Dr. Nellis. Is appropriate clarification?
I'll follow up later.
Well, I'm, I'm lost too, so.
And keep in mind, there's a slight delay for Director Brown, I said, the room, but I do want you to get clarification. What is it that you need, Mr. Tros?
So, right now, they have the option of being exempt from the final exam if they take the A P test. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you want to remove the option to be exempt from the final exam, so they'll have to take the final exam no matter what? Is that, is that the goal?
Yes, so they will be exempt from the final exam regardless. That is the goal.
If, okay.
So if they take the A P exam, they're exempt across the board from having to take any other exams.
But they don't, so we're, we're eliminating the option for them to take the exam to try to improve their grade?
That's what I was wondering.
So, I'm not explaining this well, so we will, I will go back and I will rewrite this one for clarity, so Ms. P I just missed this one all up.
No, that's okay, and I think we just, I think we, if it, if we could get board members who have specific questions that you want answered, send those to me, and I will follow, Latonya, and I will follow up on that. We will also get clarification on the specific outcome of the change in this, both under E seven and F. And we will give that to the board in the coming weeks so that you have additional clarity before the January board meeting. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Yeah, and if you can identify the goal you wish to achieve, that helps me.
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you.
Dr. Carter?
Regarding the student uniforms, does that still continue? Okay, so.
So we do have an exception, but we're.
Yeah, Bass still has uniforms.
All right, Dr. Nellis.
Yeah, I wanna, I have a question on the policy R seven dash twelve, the school attendance zones. That policy defined what the attendance zones are. What defines those now, since we're gonna, that's being proposed to delete that?
And so those same attendance zones would be on record until the board meets and reclassified them at that time, if that's what they wanted to do. But it was not a V S B policy that we had to put on record. We just had to outline what those zones were.
It also has schools that are no longer in existence, like Kaiser. And unless that, because that, that's a regional program now in that building, so that would not be, we would not need that. I think there's some others that need to be updated. But it is not a required policy. I think it's just defining the zones, which we would have on record anyway.
So our school attendance zones can be posted on our website the way they are right now, when you, you find your school, unless you're going to a school of innovation or the Go Center. But we don't need a policy to dictate, is that what you're saying? The need for a policy to dictate our school zones is not needed. Is that why this, this old?
Correct, correct. Because we have a school finder, and we already had, we already have defined zones at this point, and for whatever reason, if we go back in and if the board choose to redefine the school zones, then our office would update the paperwork and the handouts to pass out to the community at that time. But we do not need a school board policy that defines our zone, zones within V S B A at this time.
Well, I understand that from the standpoint of V S B A, but I'm not necessarily comfortable with that just being out on the website without any kind of direct board, I don't know, approval or oversight.
We currently have GPS maps that are on our website, as well as the city of Lynchburg's website. It doesn't specifically list them as this policy does with the streets and, and, you know, the definitions of, of north, south, and in, you know, areas included in something. But we do currently and have for many years, the GPS maps that have the zones and the boundaries by street.
Which was driven by this policy? Correct?
Which was driven by this policy, Dr. Nellis is saying.
That I'm not sure if it was driven by the policy.
If you have Kaiser on here, then you would have had to do something, because no one goes to Kaiser.
And the policy needed to be, needs to be updated, clearly.
Right, yeah, the last time, nineteen ninety. Unless you do your, like, your zones are, like Amy said, are GPS mapped on our website. That is our school zone, and we're in the middle of a facility study, which may have some redistricting. We can't change that until you guys vote on, like, you would have to vote to change those school zones.
See, and that's where I'm not sure that comes up. Where, where do we have control over defining?
You're saying maybe the policy should just say, where the school board establishes school zones and then has the power to vote or something like that, and they're on the website? Because if you do it by street, if they change a street name, we gotta bring the policy back and do all that. But if you just want the authority for school board oversight for, for zones, and then a vote to say, if a new neighborhood is put online, the school board will vote which schools, how those schools are allocated, or if we're redistricting, do something like that, so.
We will write a draft and bring, also send that out to you in the next couple of, next few weeks before the January fourth board meeting.
We would appreciate it, and please have Attorney Towns to look at that as well.
Yes.
All right.
So are we, are we clear that we're moving from, because the current policy addressed specific boundaries? And so is the board asking for us to draft a policy that is saying that the board will, what would be the goal of this one? Because the policy in hand basically give a list of all of the schools and all of the street boundaries. It says nothing about, okay. So what is the goal of the, I, I just need clarity, what is the goal of the draft that we are bringing back? Because the current policy just addressed the boundaries and where these schools are located, and they can be found on school finder, and that's what we typically use for registration and when we're contacting and working with parents and community members, and it also have a Geo map with it. Very seldom that they go to this direct policy, because it gives you a listing of all of the schools within your zip code, I mean, within your address to where you live. So the policy that the board is asking us to draft, what is the goal of that policy?
I think it is to make sure that in that policy, that it states that the school board is the, has the authority to determine the zones for the school division, and that the zones can only be changed with the approval and the authority from the school division, which I think we can treat the first sentence, and I also think we probably could include the maintaining proper enrollment, because we do want to make sure that only those students living within school boundaries, which is in accordance with some other policies, are enrolled in their schools. And there are a few exceptions to that with our schools for innovation and some other schools. It is just to make sure that the, it is stated somewhere that the school board has the, is the only one that has the right to change the streets that are in a specific zone.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pew. Has she appropriately characterized what the thoughts of the board is, and we certainly will look at that next time?
Yes.
So, there were some other thoughts, I think. Mr. Harvey, then, Dr. Carter.
I would like to ask about, let's see here, policy I C I D R Z, which is student course load. I think this one needs to stay front and center, especially if we're talking about any potential for scheduling changes, because this one pretty much dictates that it's a six-period with an elective or a four-period course for our seniors.
Correct, and, and you'll note on that policy, there aren't any red line changes recommended. It was to, to stay as it is for now, but if the schedule is changed to a four-by-four, whether it be an A B block or the, the four-by-four, then this policy will need to come back to the school board for an update.
And that's why.
And that's why it's standing as it is right now.
And that's why I was just gonna suggest that this not be put on the consent agenda. And, and that's why I was just going to suggest that this not be put on the consent agenda.
The, uh-
I know, but we will, we're, I guess, what I understand, because of the date, we're being asked to review it and reapprove it because of the date, correct? Even though we're not, even though we're not changing anything on it right now.
Review it and update it anytime. It's not every three-year.
Correct, this is correct, Dr. Nellis.
Next month.
We have to update it anyway, because of the three-years. And then, once the board decides, um, the schedule and which way we, we are going, then we will come back and ask the board for revision, um, for the schedule change in this policy. So it will, we'll come back with hopefully one revision, um, to the current policy that we're ax, asking to update for this three-year review.
I think we're all saying the same thing, I'm just saying that I would not approve this beyond the consent agenda.
Very, very good, instruction and program policy review have not been suggested for consent agenda at this time. Dr. Carter?
My question was answered.
All right. So then, uh, these will come before us in January for our second reading, and further updates will be given prior to, and please make sure that you communicate with Director Brown and whomever else, so that things can be as correct as possible. All right, any further discussions on this? Uh, thank you Director Brown, uh, for the fine work, and also, uh, Deputy Superintendent Pew. We will now move to section E and agenda items, number one is the Human Resources Report, Dr. Edwards?
Yeah, and you may, if you've been in your browser, might have to refresh, because it was private while we were in closed session. But now that we are out of closed session, um, it has been made public. And if you refresh, you will be able to see the documents. So, um, I would, um, like to recommend to the board, as our new HR Director, Ms. Lucretia Scott, that is up for the board for voting. Uh, as an agenda item, it's not in the consent agenda, so you actually do have to vote. And along with that is a recommendation, while we are still seeking applicants for our chief school, our Chief Financial Officer. In order to get us through the next budget period, the recommendation for interim Chief School, Chief Financial Officer, CFO, um, and Ms. Monet Davis. But I will wait for the vote, and then do an announcement.
All right, uh, board, before us is the Human Resources Report, as stated by the superintendent. And this is an action item, and the recommendation is that we approve the Human Resources Report. Is there a motion to that effect?
Moved to approve the Human Resources Report.
The move by Dr. Nellis, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we approve the Human Resources Report, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Tros?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
All right, Dr. Edwards has a report for us.
Yes, thank you very much, Board, for your support of those, um, two individuals. We are happy to have them join our team and get us through, um, the next wave of what we need to do, as we had our budget work session. We talked a lot about both staffing, HR, personnel, as well as finance, so these two individuals will be key. Ms. Scott has been with us, uh, here at LCS, she was in our payroll and benefits department, and she recently served at, as our Senior HR Generalist. So we are happy to have her move up to the role of Director of HR. She's done a fabulous job in the senior role, um, and looking forward to working with her. We've got a lot of work to do in terms of what we're going to do in, um, for our staff, which is one of our number-one priorities as we're going into the budget season. So I'm looking forward to working with her, or to continue working with her, since she is an LCS native here in our division. Also, uh, as we know, the departure of Ms. LaConage, our CFO, this is her last board meeting with us, um, and she will be journeying to her new, new position. We are sad to see her go, but also recognize that in that department, we have some talent in Ms. Monet Davis, who will step up and assist in some of the CFO roles as the interim CFO. And most importantly, to help us as we develop our budget and move forward with the goals and objectives in our strategic plan during this timely season. So Ms. Davis has also served with us in our finance department, she has been the backbone, or part of the backbone there, in working with the school board and with the, um, entire division in terms of moving us forward. And I'm looking forward to having her assist us as we do all of the work that we're about to do, um, in this amazing division. And very proud of both of them and their service to Lynchburg City Schools, and commend them both for stepping up at a time such as right now.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and congratulations to those whose assignments have been stated, and we look forward to continuing to move LCS forward, thank you very much. Now we will move to, uh, E two, which is our twenty-two, twenty-three budget discussion. And Dr. Edwards will lead us through this, and I'm trusting that pertinent questions and thoughts will be shared tonight.
So, again, this is a follow-up to all of the wonderful folks who, who came earlier for our input session and giving us guidance in terms of what the community feels as their budget, as should-be budget priorities for the board to be, to consider. What we are going to do today is kind of go through some, where are we right now items, um, and what's on the table? Most of this documentation is, are things that you have already received in some form or another, but it was just helpful to put them all together, so you would have them together at one shot. So, I want to take you through some items, and I am looking for some direction from the school board as we move forward with this. The first one I want to bring to your attention is the one that's labeled operating fund bu, budget, which is our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is the one that is posted on our website, so I took some pieces and parts of this out, just so that you would know. In it is our budget calendar, which we are going to continue to follow, so we are in December. Administration is doing the priorities, that's what this meeting is about, meeting with the school board. Um, and you can see January on, we have a lot of work to do. The second document is just the school board's vision and priorities from our strategic plan, just to kind of remind you of that document. Then you have a copy of our current revenue, and this is in our budget book, that is posted on our website for people who are watching. You can get this information on our website, but it's just a reminder of how we have been funded over the last couple of years, from two thousand seventeen all the way up to two thousand and twenty-one, so this information will be helpful. As we are working on just the operating budget, which is what we're proposing that we develop tonight. But you also have grant funding and school nutrition funds for the total funding, um, there. Most important, as we develop our operating budget, is the thirty-nine million, eight-hundred-twenty-eight thousand, four-hundred-ninety-eight dollars that was our approved budget from, um, City Council, which is the current school year. So you do have that. You also have a copy from our budget book of our expenditures, and to some degree, this is what your monthly report. Uh, when Kim does the expenditures for you, this is what the monthly report is kind of tracking back to. And again, um, the expenditures match the actual budget, so that's just historical information. Then you get to the document that you saw the entire January, February, March, April, May, when we were developing our budget. It is the FY twenty-two budget worksheet, it is the Excel spreadsheet that is numbered from one to whatever, it goes all the way up to one thirteen, I believe. And it had all of our budget priorities last year, and one of the questions, um, that was asked is, you know, could we get an update on where we are? How we're doing with the things that were proposed for this current school year's budget? So what I did for you is just kind of add a column to that, which is the one that we use during all of our work sessions, to let you know what was done, and you can see many of the items on the first page, in terms of the staff salaries, adding, um, health insurance, GovSchool, those have been done. Second page, you start to get into some of the staffing, uh, many of those positions, thank you for approving, have been filled, some where you see, they say job posted and interviewing. We are still looking for candidates or either in the interviewing process for filling some of those positions, uh, such as the reading specialist at the alternative, alternative programs at Fort Hill and EA. That is posted, and they are interviewing, as well as the safety risk manager and the data analysis, educational data analysis. Coordinator for the stipends for the, uh, special education J-LARK recommendations is in prog, in process. So we are doing that, once we get a detailed analysis of how we're going to meet the recommendations in J-LARK. The next page, again, you can see all of the things that the board has proposed have been done, in terms of what you have asked us to do. I will make a note on number one oh eight, the school counselor for the Virtual Academy. We originally proposed part-time, because we didn't know how many, um, students we would have at that time, and since then, um, our enrollment has increased, and, and actually, we had more students than we projected, so we did make that position a full-time position, so that the students in the Virtual Academy have access to a full-time counselor, so that's why it says modified. Um, and then you get to the end of those, those things, and you can see that all of those, um, positions have been filled. So I wanted to update the board, before we move to the new stuff, how are we doing on the current things that you gave us? Um, we also have fund balance returns, something else that you have seen. Two-point-three million, of which our recommendation, um, which is sent over to City Council, is that one-point-nine of that be, um, allocated for our CIP projects, which helps both us, us, because it's an investment in our city, I mean, in our buildings, as well as the city, um, because it helps offset some of those costs. About four-hundred thousand, we did recommend for the Qualtrics survey, uh, software, which Dr. Senha gave her, gave a little spiel on that, that she uses that, and, and given the need to survey and get more information from our stakeholders, this is going to be a great, um, thing, as well as upgrades in the boardroom. And the transportation, um, tracker software for our parents is in our fund balance. So if that was something that you were going to recommend that we do moving forward in the future budget, some folks have asked for that, particularly parents. I wanted parents to know that we have that as a recommendation in the current year for this budget here. And you just have the CIP projects, um, behind that as well. So that is the status of the items that we put in the budget that we voted for. What we're doing right now is staffing, and we will be meeting with, um, departments and building principals to discuss staffing needs, which is the biggest, um, part of our budget. That usually happens in January, um, so that we will be able to see how many unfilled positions that we have savings from, from those things. So I will be bringing that information back to you, but I wanted you to have this information right now. The second document that we need to go over is another one that you've seen, although we updated it, because, uh, things changed. That's the one that says CARES funding. Many of the things that some of the, uh, staff and parents have asked for are in the CARES funded budget. And again, we tried to make this pretty simple by just numbering them to keep track of the various, um, types of funds, when they expire, and what percentage of those funds have been, um, spent. And remember, as new funds came in, we shifted things, pulled things out, and, and adjusted accordingly. But I do want to call your attention to page three. Because the last time you saw this, we were on number ten for CARES funding, and that was the, um, last of the, um, ARPA funds for one-point-five million. There have since been other funds that are coming our way, and if money's coming, we're going to apply for it and try to get it in the hands of our staff. So number eleven, you can see there is, um, unfinished learning before and after-school and summer program funding that we did, um, apply for, and our application has been approved. So we are going to be using that money particularly for learning loss and before and after and summer programs. Latonya's office did a great job of writing a, um, a grant for the McKinney-Vento funds for a hundred thousand, a hundred and four thousand. That has also been approved, um, and you can see that's for services, tutoring, minivan for tutoring transportation, um, there. There was a school bus driver incentive program that we talked about last time, and the major requirement is it could be a signing or retention bonus for transportation workers who hold a active CDL. So again, we did put in for, um, those funds as well, and I do believe it might have been, I'm, I'm a double-check with that. This says ten thousand, it might have been fifty, I just want to double-check that. And then lastly, um, again, from the Student Services Department, there was a, another ESER opportunity for, um, SEL, social emotional learning, and we applied for that. And that grant has also been submitted and approved for a hundred thousand dollars. So I wanted the board and the public to know that there are some things, as one of our, our community members talked about, that are grant-funded, we try to keep more stuff in the grant funds, um, and not as many people, because you, because of the sustainability, um, with that. So that is the current status of all of the CARES funding that we received, and I know City Council is meeting tonight to approve some of our CARES funding in the capital improvement as well, and Mr. Gasky is probably over there, and now their meeting's going to start at seven, or seven-thirty. Now, the work that we need to do is in the last packet, which is the pay scales packet, um, is where I want to start for today. You heard me state, you heard, uh, Ms. Reeves state, as well as the, some of the, um, community members talk about supporting our staff. So one of the ways we can support our staff is with, uh, salaries and benefits. And what you have in your pay scale packet are all of the updated pay scales, so these have been updated as of eleven-thirty, November thirtieth, this, so these pay scales that are on our website include the dollar an hour that we added to each of those clusters for the bus drivers, the, um, instructional assistants on grade C-plus, the instructional assistants on grade, I think it's E-plus, fifty cents for the, um, the bus assistance. It also reflects changes in the RN, um, there's a separate table for registered nurses, um, that was something that we had done earlier. So these are your most current pay tables, um, that are, um, updated as of now. And then some of the things that you may note, as we're fixing and adjusting, things like the instructional assistant pay, which starting pay is at twelve-seventy-three for an instructional assistant. You will note that starting pay for a custodian is on B-plus is eleven-eighty-one, and starting pay for a head custodian, which is on D-plus, is eleven-sixty-seven. Now, why does a starting custodian make eleven-eighty-one, and a starting head custodian, assuming zero experience, make eleven-sixty-seven? This is the result of the compression that we did when we went to living wage. So remember, when we moved to living wage, we eliminated all steps that were under, at that point, I think it was eleven dollars and twenty-eight cent. And these are the resulting tables. So I bring this to the board's attention, because this is something that we obviously need to address and fix going forward. And if you look closely, you'll see some other areas where it may be similar. So you have all of our pay tables, um, the administrative pay table is next, there is a teacher pay table. There is a registered nurse pay table. School Nutrition has their separate pay tables, and you can see some of the similar things there as well. And the last one is, um, the bus driver, bus assistant pay table, which was recently updated in October. And then, of course, our subrates, which are posted on our website. So, subrates, we also increased, um, this year, particularly for long-term subs, because we're seeing more, more of our subs staying in our buildings for longer, giving them the base rate plus thirty-five dollars, which is, makes them a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty-five, or a hundred and forty-five dollars a day. So you have all of our subrates there. So. This is going to be important as we do the work, if you continue beyond the page that has subrates. So this is the first landing page where we're going to have some board discussion, and it's titled- where we're going to have some board discussion and it's titled minimum wage. And I probably should have numbered these to make it a little easier for you, but I'll wait for you to get there. It's the, here, it's easier, the third from the N. And again, these are things that you have seen previously. So for the work that we have to do, the bare minimum, if you look at this chart under minimum wage, it is actually a four-year budget that we're looking at. So to one of our community members' point, we need to be looking now and later. We are looking at a multiple-year budget. But if you look at how the proposed minimum wage will change, by January 1st, 2023, our minimum wage needs to be $12 an hour. So we still have some pay tables that are in the 11, although we don't have many people on those early entry steps, we still have pay tables there. And that will stay the same for January 2024. January 1st, 2025, it goes up to 1350 an hour. So as we're looking at our pay tables and where, where we're going over the next couple of years, we need to be shooting for 1350 by January 1st, 2025. But the real mark right now is January 1st, 2026, which is at $15 an hour. So to put that in perspective, if you look at our library assistants who currently start at 1168, or sorry, yeah, 1168 per hour in the 2022 school year, by 2026, the minimum needs to be $15 an hour. Let me stress, that's the minimum that we need to get to. Other information that you, you may need, we use the MIT living wage calculator to, when we did living wage a couple of years ago. At that time, I think it was $11.11, then it went up to $11.28. And I just pulled it for December and there are two charts. And this got us into confusion last time when people had different numbers. So let me explain the two charts. The first chart is if you pull Lynchburg metro area as the city for the metro area. But we recognize that people that live outside of Lynchburg have a Lynchburg zip code even though they don't live in the city of Lynchburg. And I think that's what that second county one is sort of pulling. So if you go on the MIT website, just be warned that there's a Lynchburg city under the metro area and then there's a Lynchburg county under, or city under the county area. The rates are different, so I'm giving you both rates for living wage. And we used originally, when we were doing this, we used the first one, which would be the 1388 on the metro side or the 1403 per hour on the county side. So, as we develop our pay schedules, that is information that we need to keep in mind because that's going to guide the work that we do. Now, what we did in advance of this is a sample pay scale conversion. So let me tell, take you to what we did as a sample and then we'll work from the sample. So the next page, you will see it says sample pay scale conversion. And it has schedule A over the course of those four years. So 2022, 23, fiscal year 24, fiscal year 25, and fiscal year 26. You will see steps that now, instead of having start at G, start at F, remember when we did some compression, we put them back to make sense for an outsider at A0. We didn't lower the rate, we just put A0, B1, B2 as a step. Remember, our steps alternate every other year. This is a proposal to get us to a minimum of $15 using classified pay schedules on the lower end. So if you look at classified pay, everything from B+, grade C, grade C+, grade D, and up to grade E, this would be a proposal for how you could do that if you were shooting to try to have pay tables that increase over four years that get to the minimum entry, no experience, $15. So there are a couple of things to note in how we did this and the second page of this has some notes. So the first thing we wanted to do when we were playing with the pay tables and trying to get to the 15 is to raise the hourly rate. So we did that. If you notice, the lowest is 1259, so that gets us above that $12 and it continues across. This is just a sample of a classified. We would have to do something similar with base pay for other schedules. I just wanted to point out, we did this with one right now. The second thing that we need to do is reevaluate job descriptions, responsibilities, and qualifications and making sure we look at what the, the distinctions between level one, level two, level three, and lead, head, and senior. There's not much difference between custodian and head custodian. And if you look at the pay, it does not look right. So that needs to be reevaluated so that a head custodian would be making more than a custodian, so we need to do that. And then if we do that, number three says realign that to the correct pay scale. So we will have to look at this and start moving positions to, this makes sense if it's clustered over here rather than clustered in the same area. So you'll see that as number three. The other thing that we are attempting to do is condense pay scales. There are 24 classified pay scales, if you look at all of them just for classified. There are 15 admin pay scales. And again, we're trying to reclassify jobs to cluster them at a higher rate, but less pay scales so that we don't have 24 of them. But folks are still being paid an appropriate wage for what they're doing. Step five, one of the things that the board noticed, if you ever took your finger and went down a pay scale, there would be these gaps and jumps and then some places where there's a little bit and then other places where there's a lot. This scale conversion that we're proposing has a 2% increase across the entire pay scale. So going down, it would be equitable, a 2% increase going down a pay scale. And if you wanted to know what's the cost of what I call the increment, moving from jump to jump to jump, it would be a built-in 2%. Now, if the governor adds more, we can layer on top of that, but it does a little bit of pay equity as we, we do that. Number six says, of course, incorporate governor's proposed salary increase. So everybody that just heard me say 2%, that's the minimum increment increase. That's not necessarily where we may land, but it starts us at a base. And then, of course, in the by and end, we can add the governor's proposed. And then number seven is to review substitute pay rates too. I don't want to miss that we have pay scales and we have a substitute pay scale as well looking at that. Now, this scale would be different than what we've had in the past because in the past, you'd be on the pay scale and you would go down the scale, which actually makes it easier to cost out. But imagine you are, and I don't know if yours is highlighted, I hope it is, you're the person who's on E7. And I'm on E7 right now and I'm making 1363 next year, all right? Normally, if we didn't, if we weren't trying to get to 15, I would just go down that scale. I would still make 1363 the following year and then the year after that, 1390, and the year after that, 1390, if there were no other increase by the governor. But what we're proposing is that you're not going down over these next four years, you're actually going across. So this person, instead of going 1363, 1363, 1390, 1390, would actually go 1363, move to E8 on a new scale, 1445, move to F9 on the, on the next scale, 1562, and then move to F10 finally at 1656. So it increases going across. It's an aggressive proposal, but it takes into consideration all of the things that we've been talking about in terms of just meeting our goals. And this sample is, like I said, based on a small group of the, the classified scale. We can, we can certainly, if the board wants to go in that direction, we can certainly activate the team to start doing those things. So the question at hand before we get to the questions is this scale, starting next year, at the base, would be 1259 for entry. It meets the minimum wage requirement. It does not meet the current living wage requirement. So that is a decision that the board would have to make and then, of course, we would shift and adjust. And then the next thing we would do is try to cost this out. And it would have to be an estimated cost and of, of what this would, what, what it would cost over the total payroll and here's why. In order to do this to the most accurate way we can, we'd have to take each individual and put them in a system on that new step and then create the new pay scales and then move them to the next step and create and move and create and move to get the actual total. So what we're going to try to do is look at total payroll and then estimate what that increase would be. And part of that's going to be what the governor proposes as well and what we would need for salaries and then increase it out that way too. But I'm going to be quiet and then I'm going to take all kinds of questions. And then ultimately, I'd like to have the board and discuss the $12 minimum, the 1259 or the living wage.
All right, let's go at it. Dr. Senha.
I just had a quick question. Can you remind me again about how the steps work? So if you hire me, if you hire a person, that is, that has five years' experience, do they come in then at a step five?
Typically, we try to put them at a step.
Okay. So it's experience and then every year they advance a step?
Correct, but remember, because we're funded every other year.
Correct, yeah. So that's why you have the letters are duplicated, the numbers are.
It's easier for folks to see and understand.
Yeah, that does make sense. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Good, good, good question. Who's next? Dr. Gupta.
So I understand you're trying to work, but to me, the biggest issue for last four years has been transportation. And I'll read a little, it was a news article in 2019 and our, Mr. A was the director of transportation. And there's a quote from him, though the school board approved increasing wages to $11, Garcia said nearby localities pay substitute drivers more. Campbell County pays substitute drivers $13.45, Bedford County 1335, Amherst 13, Affomatics 1448, and Nelson 16.48. My point is, if we can achieve a solution to this problem, to me personally, will be a big achievement because that has been a consistent, persistent problem. And every year I hear the same, that we are not able to get because of the wages what we pay to the school drivers. And I think this dollar increase will still not be able to solve if we take that three-year-old data into consideration, the problem we have been posing.
Yes, you're, you're, you're correct in what you're saying. The one thing that when we were comparing transportation salaries is we were also looking at benefits. Because you remember, one of the things that we did was increase and add more eight-hour positions. We also added the option for full benefits and investment in VRS, which some may pay a higher hourly rate and I, I don't know which districts specifically, but don't offer any benefits or, or not a full benefits. So that was one of the things that we, when we talked to our folks, in addition to wanting a higher wage, I'm not even going to disagree with you with regard to the higher wage. But I will say what we are, what we are seeing is, yes, we have a bus driver shortage, but if you walk into our classrooms, you'll also see that we have an instructional assistant shortage. We have a special education instructional assistant shortage. And we're seeing it in multiple places. So the work that we need to do is in multiple areas to, to increase it.
Can I follow up?
You can, then, Dr. Brennan.
So I understand, so let's identify those targeted areas where we are having problems and see if we can resolve them before we move on because to me, this equity is fine, cookie cutter approach has not worked so far.
Yeah. And Dr. Gupta, to, to your point, one of the things that I do want to point out and, and it was brought to my attention in a very nice way, and let me see if I can pull up the sheets to, to match it, is when you look at the bus assistant pay, which is, here we go, all right. So if I am a bus assistant who is entry level, I would be making $12.35 an hour. If I am the auto serviceman, I am making $11.67 an hour. So I totally agree with you because one of the reasons when we started adding a dollar and a dollar was to fix the problem. And as soon as we adjusted the problem, and I will tell you, we added the dollar to the IAs because one of the things that was said, after we fixed the bus drivers and bus assistants, the instructional assistants were, well, okay, if a bus assistant who supervises students on a bus makes 1235 an hour, I'm an instructional assistant who's helping students read in the classroom, why am I making 11 something an hour? So we added a dollar to them. And then I, what I'm hearing now is from, and I think the board is actually getting emails from custodians who are also part of our team that is keeping our buildings safe, school secretaries. So the answer to your question is yes and yes. Yes, we do need to look at bus driver salaries and, but we also need to look at all of our staff who are particularly below what we would call either a living wage or a livable salary.
Okay, always reserved the right to go back. Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Edwards, thanks so much for this information. It's a tremendous amount to prepare and for us to digest. One, one quick comment, which is that Mr. Trost and I watched the VSBA webinar about budgeting, which was really helpful. And one of the things they talked about, which I think relates to what Dr. Gupta is saying, is that as we go through this process and talk to city council and talk to the community to compare our teacher salaries and rates to surrounding counties may be helpful. So when they say, we're trying to raise them up to this amount, they can see where our surrounding counties are and realize we're still below that. I think that's just information that's helpful. But then, if you could help clarify for me and also for the public who may not understand at this point, that we're talking about here with the budget change between fiscal year 23 and 26 is a state requirement is why we are discussing it. This is what we need to do. This is not something that we've just come up with, but actually a state requirement, which also affects the city employees also. So my, one question is, has there been any communication yet with city as far as what their plan, where do they stand with their employees and where we stand? And then the last comment, last question I have, and also for clarification, is that as you have mentioned, Gutter Northam has suggested maybe there'll be a 5% increase per year for two years for 10%. What impact does that have on our budget if that were to occur?
Yes, okay. So to start with the first one, yes, it is a state requirement that we get to this minimum. And I would be remiss if I did not say that there are other places that are already there. You know, you can, you can go to a grocery store or gas station and some places, a clothing store and get $15 an hour now. So while we're trying to get to that as a minimum by the January 2026 deadline, it, it's occurring now for our workforce. The second thing that you talked about in terms of just outreach to city, we did have, and I know Ms. Lakonic had some initial conversations just to see how they were addressing it. And I think they are in a better position than we are in that they don't have as many workers, if any, that are under this $15 an hour. They did do a salary study a couple of years ago, made some adjustments and were moving towards what I think they had the entry, then the midpoint and so on and so forth. So, I mean, I can certainly ask for specific likewise data, but I don't think they're in the same position that we are in in terms of the number of positions that we have that start below $15 an hour. And then as far as the 10% over two years, yes. So what you would, what we would end up doing is calculating what our proposed increase would do, and this is how we normally would do our budget. And then what extra would we have to add to get to that 5% in year one? And then I think it's a 5.25 because it's, it's compounded in year two so that we are meeting the overall increase of 5 and 5. so that we are meeting the overall increase of 5.5, which is 10 over the two years. It would add a decent portion of our budget. I mean, if you look at just the increases that we have been able to do over the last couple of years, adding 5.5. And that's, and we'll wait and see how it's formulated. But if it's SOQ funded, there's a local match. And then everybody who is not in an SOQ position, and by the way, we are working to get the list so you'd have exactly how many staff members we're talking about our SOQ would be eligible and how many are not because we would be on the hook for funding the full amount for those individuals.
Thank you.
Mrs. Morrison?
Dr. Brennan had several of my points as well. But I've noticed that there are some school divisions around us that are doing salary studies about how they compare with other school divisions. And I know we have that information, but I'm wondering if that is something that would be beneficial for us. Also looking at the cost benefit. If we're hiring position, is the cost, what it's worth the benefit? And I think I've heard that we're doing some, that needs to be done. But I think we do need to be very careful as we add positions that are funded with money that will not be here long-term. And that, that's a worry for me as we're adding and adding that we're not going to be able to sustain it. My priority for me is doing what we can do right now for the staff that we have. And I think that, that we all agree that that's important and a priority. And, and I do think we need to look at our staff and make sure that we're doing what we can do.
Most of the places, if they are doing salary studies, or at least it's been my experience, if you participate and you share generally when they get the finished product, they share back, right? Usually they share back. So hopefully, we'll be able to get some of that information. When we did our budget presentation before, before COVID, we, remember, we had where we were and not only where we compare, but where were our entry level, our mid-level and our top-level staff? Because sometimes you could compete on entry. But if, if I could get to the top quicker in another division, then.
Or make $10,000 by driving down.
Yeah, exactly. So we have to take a look at that for staff positions.
And I have just one more question.
Please, Mrs. Morrison.
Do we have contracted substitutes, substitutes that we have on staff?
Okay, so what we did this year is we have building-based subs. So they're in that building typically four days a week with a contract to be in that building four days a week. So they just show up there four days. Some of them are five days, depending upon the building's needs, if they were really struggling with staff to come in and do that. And we, we made that, we did that a little bit last year, but we were real purposeful this year, saying it's, it's better to have the folks in the building. And they've been needed and still, still short, so.
Very good, Mrs. Morrison. Who else? Mr. Harvey?
Yes, I, I will say this. I do support the pay scale conversion. And I think, I appreciate putting this package together. I think we, we need to make that a focus moving forward. I, I will be really interested to see what the overall impact to the budget is from this. So when we can get, as soon as we can get those projections, that's going to really be, be helpful for us. And I think with that being said, you know, I'm hoping that we're going to receive a line item budget versus just a summary budget so we can kind of look at some of these things. Some of the questions that I always hear come from this board and this document here kind of addresses it a little bit, talks about our CARES funding. You know, I think we could, when I was at BSBA, one of the sessions, several of the school systems were talking about how they put this information on their website. They broke it down, what their CARES funding was, what they were spending it toward, if it was already spent. And so the community got to see where the money was going, what it was being spent on and what things were coming up on that cliff. So for instance, if we had something like, I'm looking back through air budget, there was, there was a line item that we had that we actually pulled from the proposed budget and said that that should be a CARES funding thing. And that was for behavioral support. And so, you know, I, I went back and I was trying to find exactly where that's detailed in here because that would be one of those staff positions that we're talking about that would be that fiscal cliff that would happen that we would need to address. So for me, having a line item budget to be able to look at, to see where we're spending, where we could potentially hopefully save so we can possibly tackle some of these things that will, that we've positions we might have in the CARES funding that are going to hit that financial cliff when the CARES funding runs out. But we could still absorb them into our budget to be able to look at that. So, you know, again, that's why I would really like to see an itemized budget. And I think that it would be helpful if this could be itemized as well. Because I think, you know, when I look at this and I see, okay, we spent 100% of this, this particular CARES funding, we spent, you know, 6% of this or 0.5% of this, you know. For, if I were a community member and I'm going, wait a minute, you've got over $12.6 million and you've spent half of a percent of that? Why? Well, if you break it down and you understand, a lot of it deals with, with buildings and facilities and so forth like that. And therefore, it's in this other document where we're showing how that money is being spent. So I think a little bit better of a breakdown will be beneficial to our, not only to our board, but also to our community to understand this and helping us to project that, that financial cliff when it comes. Because I think, you know, we had a, had a member speak on it and right on the spot, in my opinion, that it's something we need to be thinking about, understanding and looking at these line items that we have had in here. Is there a cost benefit? Do they need to continue or do we need to, you know, sort of phase them out? And then one other point that I wanted to make, because, because again, I was, I kind of wish we would have been able to stop at each piece and kind of address each piece as we, as we encountered it. But on the fund balance return, my understanding was at our last board meeting that we voted, because I believe I made the motion, that we voted that the, the fund balance would be spent on the capital improvement plan fiscal year 2023, which was $1,947,403, and also the transportation equipment upgrade and tracker implementation. So I'm assuming that those are going to be line items that will be in this budget that we'll, that we'll get to see.
Yeah, we just need the city to approve that.
Okay. So we'll, we as a board are going to be getting much more detail. This is just the initial, here's the summary, here's the overarching, and we're going to get to see more of the breakdown. Because that's the piece I've been asking for in the past. I want to be able to see a little bit more line, not getting in the weeds, but when I talk to members of council, they expect, they're expecting us that we're looking at line item budgets and not just summary budgets. So I just want to make sure that we, we are doing our due diligence.
Dr. Gupta?
You know, last year when we approved this budget, we had $3.6 to $4 million new positions funded through the CARES money. And this board voted 8-2-1 to approve that unfunded mandate. So it's, 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 to me, it's interesting. Now people are saying the financial cliff and we are going off that cliff. And they all voted at that time, 8-2-1, to approve, knowing the money will not be there. And the issue was raised, now what will you do three years down the road? You'll have to lay off all these people. Because the money is not there to sustain those positions going forward. And that's about 3.6 to 4. Correct me if, I don't know the exact number offhand, but I think it was $3.6 million of those brand-new positions which we added last year.
Some of them are, we, we're anticipating being in operating budget. We're, we're okay. But some of them, you're right, and, and we were being transparent. And even if you go on our website and you were to apply, we're trying to be transparent that this is a CARES-funded position and it may go away and might serve a need right now. Now, you will be proud of your building leadership teams and your department heads and everybody because the work that you're talking about, Mr. Harvey, is already being done because they are, as they're working through it right now, looking at, okay, if I have this new position or program or what have you and it's serving me well, what can I eliminate so I can slide this in operating? They fully understand that there is a need to evaluate effectiveness and you may have to make some decisions. And they are making those decisions that will say, I don't need an instructional assistant for this class. I do need this because here's where I'm seeing the behaviors. So can I trade? And we've been doing a lot of internal swaps or taking a position. If somebody leaves a position, they're saying, I don't need you to repost that. Here's what I really need. So that, that's going on. The other thing that we do, and, and at some point, I need to clarify, when you say line item, what I think, whether or not we're on the same, same page because I say the same to my building principals about line item. And they are, when you look at just, let's just say instructional resources for kids, they're going through that right now, saying, you know, the kids are here. They've been here since August. This is what we said we would spend money on when we created the operating budget. They're self-auditing, did I, did I get that for students? And if the answer is no, then why? And in some cases, it might have been, wow, that came in because we got that through a CARES grant. So it subbed out some operating dollars. And where, what can I do with these operating dollars that will be beneficial for my staff and students right now? And I know there's questions, sometimes teachers will ask like, well, is there money for? Is there money for orchestra? Is there money for this? Is there money for that? And that's what our building leaders and our department leaders are looking at right now in terms of going across and saying, have I met all my needs? Particularly if you budget it for academic support because a lot of this CARES money is learning loss. So some of that academic support that was built into operating can be shifted to use to cover other areas for right now. The people piece is harder. We are going to have to make tough decisions. But we've been making tough decisions about, are these positions needed? And are they giving us the bang for the buck? And when it comes to the new ones, particularly in the social, emotional, behavioral, mental wealth, what are the outcomes that determine effectiveness? So that you say, yeah, that was a real, that was, that was it. That's where we are right now.
Well, I, I, I do know this, that this is an exciting time for us as a board. We, we have varying levels of experience with this process. We have one board member that this will be the ninth iteration. We have one, this is the first. And so there's a lot of wisdom around this table. But I want us this year to kind of be together around our philosophical approaches. Now, at least one board member, Mr. Harvey, is throwing out there this line item piece. What is the will of the board? And again, I'm not absolutely sure the direction that Dr. Edwards wants to get for tonight. But I do not want us to go through this process. We've been given the outline of where we are each month. But how, you know, when we get to that place where we're getting ready to make our final approval, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Dr. Gupta?
I think what you did last time was pretty detailed. Line item could go all the way up to a bus driver, to the transportation department, you know, how much funding you're allocating. So all the new positions you had detailed out in terms of what the cost expenditures are, right, on top of your current budget, right? Any changes you had presented in what I call it a detailed, very micro level. Am I correct in stating that in that five pages of discussion which we went through? Because a lot of your costs are fixed costs, they're human resource. So you cannot lay off a tool, Gupta, just because it doesn't meet the line item, you know? So those are, 80% of your budget is fixed. There's not much maneuvering possible there.
Mr. Harvey?
I can make up a clarification. We had someone tonight ask us about funding for the orchestra. If someone could take this document and tell me how much funding we have for the orchestra, I would appreciate that. I can't find that here. So how am I to say, no, I feel like we have enough funding for the orchestra? Or no, we do need to have more funding for the orchestra? That's the types of things that I think we need to be more informed, educated, invested in to, to, to be able to look at those things, to be able to answer that question that that, that that person has.
Mrs. Morrison?
Dr. Edwards, you said you needed direction from us. Could you state what it is that you need from us so that we can address that?
Okay, yes. So this, like I said, is just a sample. So we, we, and, and I can't take credit for this. It's an excellent team of people who put this together and really followed a set of parameters. But this clearly starts with $12.59 as the entry level for Schedule A. This would be a classified Schedule A of where a person would start. This would not be bus drivers because bus drivers are already higher than this. So again, we made this a couple months or before we made some changes. But if the board is saying, and you were very clear several years ago where you're like, uh-uh, don't start below $11.28, $11.11, which was living wage. So if the board is saying at minimum, no pay schedule should start below and fill in what X is, then that will help us go back and kind of retool. There's a lot of work that has to be done in kind of calculating these. So if we have direction up front, we can save man-hours on the backend. I will tell you, the last time we did this was completely inefficient. We were here till 10, 11 o'clock at night and we just kept killing trees and bringing back paper when we kept changing the number. So if philosophically, the board has a, we really want our employees to start here, then if I knew that, then I can go back and direct and then we can give you accurate charts and start to cost out. What does that cost? What would that cost? And then you can make shifts and adjustments from, from that. I just don't want to, okay, start with that one and then, okay, change it to $12.75 and go back. We can't do that. We don't have the manpower to, to sustain that. So my direction is you have what the state says is where we need to get to with $12.12, $13.50, $15. You have current MIT at December, because that's usually our cutoff. We look at it in December. Now, remember, living wage does change over months. So folks were upset that we had a December mark, built the budget, and then come July 1, it changed. We have to cut it off. So that's why I put the December rates there. So I just need to know where the board is in terms of that.
All right, so, so that we can be effective and efficient. Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. One piece we need to give some guidance to the, the, the direction is that amount. And so if we can get that tackled, and then we may or may not be able to figure out whether we want to deal with this line item piece or not. Dr. Gupta?
You know, I don't want to keep harping on the same thing. Tomorrow, the custodian shows, shows up and they say, I don't have enough toilet paper. So will you be providing us all the expense you have for buying the toilet paper? That, yours, do you have that kind of bandwidth to take care of that micro-level information in a, in a, in a division which is managing a $100 million budget?
It can be done. Again, it takes people offline to sit down and actually parcel through a material order to find just all of it.
Take it to a higher level of information processing. If somebody wants detail, they can come to you or go to the people and ask to dig through that minute details.
And let me, forgive me, Dr. Brennan, I skipped over you, sir. Please forgive me, Dr. Brennan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to comment on what Mr. Harvey and I think Dr. Gupta was talking about. Number one, I'd like to talk about the orchestra at some point when that topic comes up because I think that is something we'd like to discuss. Referring back to our VSBA program went to, they have a report that they say we should use to look at our budget, which is broken down similar to what we get on our monthly report from the, the schools, which is personnel, IT, buildings, all the expenses. I'm kind, which I think is the level, the big level we want to be at. I'm kind of hoping that when we go through the things that we went through last year, we had all these things, that if we're going to suggest a change, we could just put under which, which bucket that falls into. So if there's a $10 change and, $10 change in personnel, that's because of this reason. That's the view I like to have as a, as a line item. You know, if there's an increase-decrease, just tell me what impacted that so we just know what that is. Not obviously, how many rolls of toilet paper? But, you know, if you're going to give $100 more to orchestra, that's underneath this, this category and that's what you approved. So that's why it's included in there. But I think that, if that's, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, and, and just for clarification, I'm not asking how many rolls of toilet paper. A line item budget, folks, is you could have transportation. And under that, you could have buses, personnel, maintenance. And under that, you could have buses, personnel, maintenance costs. You know, those types of things broken down a little bit more. Look at this, folks. I mean, air, air expenditures is, it's very general. And I'm, I'm not asking for a lot of detail. But as a business owner, when I look at my budget, I know what, you know, what my overall big expenses are. That's a line item budget. We just, we're not looking at a line item budget when we look at this. This even says it's a summary budget.
So school budgets are slightly different. So let me just give you-
And I understand that.
...of what a line might be. A purchase services line in a 3,000 account. So you purchase services for things for students. So it might be subscriptions for students to be in your musical things so that they can compete. It might be consultants that come work directly with students in that purchase services line. The same thing might be purchase services for staff, like me in a 5,000 dollar line. It might be my PD registration to participate in that program. It might be my professional subscription to be in this organization. But what you would see is purchase services. And you, it will give you your total. And, and when we run our reports, that's what it would say. We'll give a percent spent of that purchase services. Now, if you want to see, well, I need to know every purchase service. Now we're down to the PO level. But think about, okay, let's think about anything that we would buy. A trumpet, violin, rosin, reeds, whatever else you might, drumsticks. I'm just thinking all things music. Materials and supplies would be in there for that particular instructional area. So in materials and supplies, in addition to the drumsticks and all of that, you may have, it depends on how it's set up, clay, paint, other materials and supplies. So here, what used to happen is particularly at an elementary level where it's not necessarily always content based because of the way they mix. Louisiana at the high school, not so much at the elementary level. You'll have a general instructional supply account for which I might give that to an elementary teacher and say, all right, grade two, this is what you're getting. And in that, we'll have reading, math, blah, 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 blah. But if you wanted to itemize down to, well, how much of that is reading? How much of that is math? You might be digging through individual orders to get it to that level. That's, that was my first question about. Let me make sure I understand what you mean by line item and what I mean by line item. Now, if you wanted to know how much a school spent on materials and supply, instructional materials and supplies for kids, that's a line item. But it might not get you the detail that you-
I think that's the level that I'm talking about. For instance, I would love to know, you know, we talk about the gov school a lot, all right? What does the city of Lynchburg spend to send in tuition to the gov school? Are we getting air bank for our buck for that? You know, those are the types of things that I'm talking about. I'm not, I mean, we keep, we keep going to the extremes, talking about how many rolls of toilet paper. That's not what we're talking about here. I'm talking about big picture.
But the gov school- But the gov school in itself is not, would not be a line item. So again, if we're paying for tuition for students, it might be a larger budget either at the division level, which may not say how many at heritage or, I mean, you'd have to break it down to get to that. But it would not be as specific as what-
What I would like us to do for tonight is that Ms. Morrison raised a very important question and which Dr. Edwards answered. So I want us to deal with that. And then hopefully, we can bring closure to tonight. And I'm going to ask that the vice chair and myself will work with the board to kind of get some clarity on these details about what it is that we want and what is most feasible and appropriate for a budget for a school division to have in it as we review it for approval. And so if you will allow us to do that. So I think what we need to be able to give direction on tonight, are we satisfied with the 1259? Is that what you're asking, 1259?
That would be the base, that's just the sample base, yes.
Sample base. Now, of course, I have not put any hours, in any hours of preparation for this. I'd like to see it to be a, what you call the living wage. Since I haven't put that in, I'm not going to appear to be ignorant and talk about like I know what that would be. But where are we with this? Are we okay with the 1259? Dr. Carter?
I think if we do the 1259, we will not be able to be competitive. You can start off working at sheets, making 13 plus and 13, at least 1365. And we, we're talking about trying to be competitive. And I think someone was hiring bus drivers right in the, this area that was $17 an hour. So I think to be competitive, then we have to start at the $15.
So you're saying jump right to, that's the first one.
All right, you've heard Dr. Carter. Anyone else like to weigh in? And so that I can make this as simple as possible, members of the board, if we can make this as simple as possible. Mr. Tros, would you just give your thoughts? And we'll go around and maybe by the time we have, we would have come up with something that would be viable. And then we can bring closure for tonight.
Well, being new to the whole process, my concern, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we could spend a lot of time on a, a very large number and then the money's not going to be available and then you have to redo the work again. I, I recognize Dr. Carter's issue. I agree with that issue. But I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know if we can afford that.
Can we afford that, Dr. Edwards?
Uh, if we have a friendly, if we have a friendly-
I really didn't mean to put you on the spot to answer.
Well, put it this way. We, what we put together is what we think we can afford. Save anyone saying, absolutely, we're going to get you there.
Right.
Right? If we got an absolutely, we're going to get you there partner, yes. But we were trying to be logical and stepwise in, in just using the experience that I've had for the past three years.
And that's why, how you arrived at the 1259?
Yes, I, and, well, we started with 15 and kind of worked our way back. Because any big jump in any one year is a large ask. So we were trying to step it up so that it would be a little ask each time.
I mean, I agree with Dr. Carter. It's going to be tough to get people, but I'm not sure we can jump to a $15 an hour, like you say, in a big ask. So I, I mean, I support the 1259.
All right, Dr. Brennan?
Can I say one piece of clarification? I thought at the part of the conversation, we're talking about, Dr. Edwards, you were going to provide us once there was the, the input from the board with what the cost would be to do this. I think, I'm assuming both what you're proposing and then perhaps a living wage too, what the difference would be there so we would actually know what those numbers are?
So what we, what we would have to do and not, we don't have any revenue numbers from anybody right now. So we don't, we don't know what we don't know until we, until we get those. Is to do an estimate on total payroll. So if our, whatever our total payroll is, let's just say it's X. And then in order to kind of estimate where, if we use our scattergrams, where everybody is, if we were to put them on, just say the 1335, that would be an increase of an average of, right? Because it's hard, it's going to be difficult to do it by person by person. And that would increase the overall payroll budget by a certain percentage or certain dollar amount. That's what we want to go back and start to calculate in real time.
Yeah.
But what we didn't want to do was just, well, calculate it at 12, then calculate it at 13 and calculate. So I just need to know, because I will tell you, the last time that we did this was terrible in terms of just the amount of employee hours. And I'm already short staff.
Sure.
So if I know right now, if this board was diehard saying, don't even think about starting with anything except living wage, then I'll go, okay, I at least know where I can, I can start with that. Or if you're saying, we don't want the percentage to be over, you know, whatever, you know, 5%, 6% or whatever the case may be, then I can work that way. But I just don't want to spend a lot of time.
Dr. Brennan, your point was very well taken. It doesn't appear we would have that information tonight as such. But do you kind of think on, based on what we do have, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm just not sure because if, if, because I'm, I obviously am in support of what's being proposed. I think it makes a sense as a starting point. But does that mean then we will not get that, that estimated data for a living wage?
We could, we could still start here. And we could say, start here.
Yeah.
And then we do that. And then we see what the cost is. And then if we get friendly revenue numbers, then it's like, woo, we could, we could, we could, instead of starting at FY '22, maybe we could start at FY '23 and move it up a year if we get friendly revenue. I just don't want to wait till revenue. And I will tell you, the conversation that I had last year that I absolutely can't control is, well, how can you propose this, but you don't know how much money you're going to get? I, I will never know how much money I'm going to get until city council, until they actually vote. But it's what we want to take across the street and say, this is what we need.
Yeah, fine, okay. Well, I'm in favor of what the administration's supporting for their starting point to estimate what the pay scale should be.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Ms. Morrison?
I would like for us to be at $15 an hour. But I think we can get there by working, starting with what was recommended tonight, projecting cost. Maybe we can do more.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Dr. Nellis?
Yeah, I support the administration's approach. If you look at this, this is a 6% jump each year. You know, if you try to start off at $15 an hour, there's, with all the pay scales, there's, it's a huge issue with compression. And that just, that causes lots of issues also. And we also will have the government, you know, whatever salary raises the state's going to propose, which looks to be, you know, 5% a year for two years. That, that in itself is a challenge. I mean, that's the reality of it. And I mean, we're, we've, we all know we're competing with surrounding divisions for professional and classified staff. And, you know, we need, we need to have better raises than they are. And we need to support a city council to do that. And to me, this is, it's, it's more prudent to do it gradually than try to do it all at once.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Dr. Senha?
Well, I agree with what everybody else said. And I wholeheartedly support trying to simplify all these pay scales to get them to a more manageable set. I mean, that's part of the problem. You, you know, you just have so many. So, and I'm not clear why there are so many. Are they required? Are they, is this written into code somewhere? And somehow can we just combine them so that when you want to do a scenario test and look at, okay, because you can, you can pack formulas in here. So all you have to do is change the starting number and it'll, or the rate of change, and it'll automate. So that, that's fixed. But when you have to do that for so many scales, that's just, it's really a waste of time. I mean, it's a gallant effort and it's worthwhile, but when you're doing that many. So I would really encourage you to do something about these. I'm not sure what, but somehow eliminate these and combine them and in a way that works for everybody, doesn't, you know, cause, might have to shift people around in a scale to keep them consistent with what they're currently earning. But then get them all down to one somehow.
So noted, Dr. Senha, ma'am clerk, very good. Dr. Gupta?
You know, I will not know, as Dr. Brennan said, where these, what, what is the overall cost is. But to give you an example, I was in your building about a month ago, saw a gentleman, and it was around 3:00. And I said, you're going home? He said, no, I'm going for a second job. He's a custodian, I will not name him. So I asked him, I said, so when do you spend time with your family? And it's heartbreaking. He said, oh, she brings me lunch sometime. That's exact same quote from the man. So basically, we sit here and say, we appreciate what you're doing, blah, blah, blah. But look at the poor guy. He has to work two jobs to pay his just bills. And, but having said that, and I understand we may not have money, but there's something called resource reallocation. Take money out from where you think is a fluff and put it to what you think is a strategic objective. For me personally, this year, if I, personally, if I can resolve the transportation issue. Because I've been hearing for the last four years, we don't pay enough to our drivers. The, the counties pay more than we do. And I understand the concept of equity. But the problem is, we got an ongoing problem year after year where we don't have bus drivers in beginning of the school year. And what are we going to do? Same old, same old. We make up a budget, present it and pass it off. So I'm not in favor of a one particular number till it tells me if it is solving an existing problem. What, what, why are you giving me medicine? What, what is this medicine for? If the doctor gives you some bunch of white tablets, you're scared to take them because you don't know what you're putting in your mouth, right? Doctor has to tell you what the medication will do to you. So right now, I'm not hearing any of those mitigation things of the prob, existing problems. Long speech, but.
Very good. But what are you suggesting, Dr.? You, you have been, oh, what, what are you wanting to say?
I'd like to see a little bit more analysis in terms of, as Dr. Brennan said, how much will this cost? Because you're asking me to look at 1265, 1365, 15. And in an Excel spreadsheet, I don't think it'll be too much time to see, multiply by total number of employees, your incremental cost and say, how much is burdened will it cost on the budget? As a school board, you can look at it, this million dollar, where am I going to get it from?
Okay. All right, Mr. Harvey?
Ironically, just running some numbers, you take the highlighted 1363, you had 10% from it. If the state does honor that, that gets you at almost $15 even. So for me personally, I would like to suggest if the administration could run the numbers, looking at 1363 being the start, which is basically an hour, a dollar and some change difference between the 1259 that we're talking about. Use that number as, as your target to then give us an order of magnitude of what that impact would be to the budget. Then that, I think that gives us all what we're looking for is, you know, how sizable is, is the impact to our budget to get our staff to $15 an hour, which we believe to be, you know, a good living wage.
You said 13 what?
1363, which is actually highlighted in the sample pay. It comes up to $14.99 if you increase it 10%.
All right, thank you, sir. I certainly understand the logic of the 1259 and the research that is going in there. So that would certainly be the lower level. I, I'm more inclined in hoping that we can get to where Dr. Carter originally said of the $15. And so let's, let's try to, to work that. So based on what I'm hearing, I hear once, I hear nothing less than 1259, 1363. And a lot of people wanting us to go and look and see where the comparative pieces are. Does that give you some direction, Dr. Edwards?
It does. I just have one follow up.
Please.
Okay. So the last time we did this, the board consciously did nothing about compression, right? So remember, we, we did 1128? And we had all those people who were at like 1129 and under. So assuming, and I just want to make sure I calculate correctly, assuming I even start either 1259, 1363, is the board's understanding, do that and move everyone up comparatively? Not just the people who need to get to 15? But if you're at 27, you're going to go up. And if you're at 65, 80,000, you're going to go up comparatively too. And what the total cost of moving everybody, I guess.
That's what, that's what we're saying.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Tros has, and then Dr. Brennan?
And, and I think it, almost whatever number you start at to get to, we can do a sensitivity analysis just by imposing the difference percentage wise across whatever. So I don't, I, I think we can address everybody's question with a sensitivity analysis as long as you get us, oh, if we start at 1259 and it's going to cost this much money across the board, and since we're going across the board evenly in the increase, that'd be pretty straightforward to a sensitivity analysis, I think. Maybe not as easy.
It's a scat, for us, it's a scattergram because you got different folks on different levels, on different pay schedules, all 50 of them.
You want to, go ahead.
Dr. Brennan, then Dr. Nellis?
So I just wanted to clarify one thing Mr. Harvey's brought up because I, I respect him and I respect Mr. Tros and their view. But my feeling is the finances are a little bit more complicated than just saying we're going to raise this by a certain percentage. But I think what we're saying is that we want to know what the information is for the $12 plus versus $15, what the, what the cost would be for those two different things.
What I was suggesting is that if we assume, and this is a big assumption, that the state is going to increase teacher salaries by 10% over the next two years. Ironically, that 1363, you add 10% to that, we come up to $14.99, which is their target, $15. So what I was just offering is if we took that 136- So what I was just offering is if we took that 13.63 as the magic number that the administration used to run these calculations, use that to give us, because my understanding would be right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Edwards, but 12.59, you kind of already have that number calculated out.
We, we kind of based out that that would be a reasonable ask.
Right. So, so you have that order of magnitude number, so I'm just asking to compare it, use that 13.63 number as a comparative, because the increase to 10%, which would get us to $15 an hour, will come, hopefully, knock on wood, will come from the, from the state.
But my, my, I guess, and again, I, I would like the administration to let us know what they can provide, because that 10% is only for SOQ positions.
Not everyone.
So it's not for everybody.
Well, we're not, I, I guess what I'm also thinking is, we're not going to be able to calculate every single minute, but this would give us an order of magnitude, because if, if she comes back and says, it's going to be another, you know, $200,000 to the budget, we'll go, oh, yeah, let's do that. But if she comes back and says it's another, you know, 10 million to the budget, is that going to be a, a shock factor that this board can't?
And I just want to make sure, as has been said before, that what we're asking the administration is clear, so when they come back with that, we don't say, well, you know, in fact, we didn't include all SOQ, or we, you know, we're not getting 10%, so I want to make sure that second piece is clear to the administration.
So what was run was at the low level. So remember, I just took, we took the entry of classified. We didn't do, we didn't do principals. Let's just take another end of the higher end of the table and run that. So we would have to run them all. So when you say, what I know, what I know is for this small group, as a test group to see, how would it work if we did it? And before we get too far, is this something that the board wants us to do? Because this took us some time to really, to really map out. So I can certainly take it and then go back and try to scale it up and say what it might, you know, what an estimated cost will be. But it is a little different, because the costs are based on scattergrams, they're based on whether or not you also have a master's, there are other things that factor into your, it's not just flat on an hourly rate. So it really is a guesstimate, I, I will say, the best way that we, we can do it. And just looking at what the overall, what is the total for the payroll, and then what is that increase, average increase overall, when you do everybody?
Right.
What's that total? And then you can see the difference, would be, how to be the best way, instead of trying to do it person by person and individual by individual.
Right. All right, so I think that we have some-
Excuse me, Dr. Alman.
Go ahead, Dr. Edwards.
What I heard was to take this 10% increase to address compression and apply it to everybody, okay? Personnel accounts for about 80% of our budget.
Right.
$100 million, 10% of $80 million is $8 million. That's what you're looking at, if that's what you want to do.
Well, that, that's what, that would come, that 10% would actually come from the state.
Only for subposition.
Well, I, yeah, okay, I'll-
I think we, you heard from most of us what we agreed to.
Yeah.
And what has it been, while, prior to the, if it's, what we're asking is eight, what has it typically been?
What do you mean, what we're asking? What have we received, or?
If I'm hearing Dr. Nellis correctly.
I, I was just based on, on a comment I heard, that to address compression, we'll just apply it to everybody. It's pretty order of magnitude, that's what you're looking at.
And that's why I would do a sensitivity-
That's what you do. And that's not what this is.
Okay, that's what I want to understand.
That's not what this is.
Okay.
And that was to address compression, which is a separate, but it's a, it's an issue, and I think it needs to be addressed individually. I mean, when we've had raises from the state in the past, it's, you know, you know, 4% has been a cha, a challenge for us. And, and we need to, we want to be competitive.
Especially if there's a local match required.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
There's, there's the local match, and the state funds SOQ positions, which are, I don't know, half maybe of instructional. And, you know, we need to do better than that to, you know, start catching up with our neighboring school divisions. So the, I'm just saying, I, I understand what, what, what the administration's asking for in terms of direction, and I, I, I support their, their basic approach here, but we need to really be aware, it's, it's, you know, personnel's, personnel costs are big. It's, it's the major, major expense for the school division, and it's, it's hard to, it's hard for us to, I mean, we don't raise, we don't raise our own revenue.
No taxing authority.
Yeah.
Correct. Dr. Gupta, then Dr. Senha.
I'm going to just put her point forward. Is there any way to simplify these scales, you know, compress them out? So I don't know if it's logical or possible, but to me, it should be a nightmare for anybody who's, if there's no computer software running these things.
You could build an algorithm that takes all of these and factors in even degree levels, assuming you have that all in your data. You know, one of the things I think we need to recognize is part of this pressure, this upward pressure on payroll, is that we never, I don't know that we ever made people whole from what we cut back in 2008. And that's not right. And that's not our fault, that's just a thing that's happened. And, so we're going to have two kinds of increases. We're going to have across the board 10% increase, plus what is, trickles forward from just adjusting up to a living wage. And we're talking about a living wage of a person who doesn't have a family, right?
Yep.
Because there are different levels of living wage of what it, what it takes to live. So, I mean, what do you do with that? You can't go on having unfilled positions and turnover, and we need to, we, we are a complicated school district, we're an urban school district, we have students who are uniquely different from the surrounding counties, challenges that are unique to us as a, as an urban school district compared to the surrounding counties. And so we need to compensate our faculty and staff accordingly.
Well said, Dr. Senha. So I think we're clear on the minimum of 12.59 and upwards. And, Dr. Edwards, you'll bring this back to us, and we'll have further conversation about it. And I certainly want Lynchburg to be leading the way in pay.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one question just about the budget in general? So I'm disappointed, I was practicing my spiel about the music thing, I'll have to do it another night, but how, how do we submit requests to the budget that individual board members like to do? Would that be in another session, or? Which is fine with me.
As an individual board member, you probably do it on the, with the, either on the, the form and blah, blah, blah. You could do it that way, or if you want to entertain it here. Can I address this, the one question, because the orchestra question has come?
Sure, but Dr. Brennan-
Thank you.
Do it now. Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, so with regard to just looking at things across budget lines, so that you know what I do, and when I get questions like, do we have money to get whatever, right? Let's just say science supplies, we don't have any money for science supplies. The first thing that I do is go back and look at the budget, similar to what you ask, and try to kind of look down. Now, we have not had as much clarity in the elementary grades breaking apart by content, just because it hasn't been that way, but I sort of changed that, and kind of, we're getting there, it's better. So I can kind of see across. So I know there's been a question about, has there been money allocated to schools for orchestra? The answer to that is yes, there has. And it's not, we don't do it at a division level, and it's been individual schools work with their staff, their teachers to do that. And I have talked to the principals to encourage them to talk to their staff and see what those needs are. That being said, and Ms. Morrison can back me up as a building principal, if I'm a building principal, and, you know, the Ed Foundation just brought all of my stuff, we got a wonderful grant, and I have operating dollars that I was going to get that, but now the Ed Foundation has done it, and I have a need in music, I'm going to ask the superintendent, can I transfer that instructional money that was there? That need is met, and can I fund music because we have a need? And the answer is almost always yes. We see transfers within line item budgets to meet the needs that kids have. And that's the process that happens, but that does, that happens at a building level, does not happen at a board level down to a, let me look at what's in your school. And I will encourage all my staff, who whenever you have a question about, hey, do we have, the first place to go is to your building principal or your department head, to ask that question. And again, having had conversations with some of the building principals, just to remind them of that process, that that is, that is there. So that is there for the folks who need whatever they need.
Thank you for that, Dr. Edwards. And so I'm looking forward to the budget deliberations that we will have this year, and we've gotten off to a, a very interesting start tonight. And so let us continue to move forward. We are now moving to section F, informational items. Our next school board meeting will be on Tuesday, January the 11th, and the work session will be on the 25th. Please allow me to say to each of you, this has been a very powerful year, 2021. It's December, and the year's almost over, but I want to commend you all. We've stayed together, we have been able to deal with some really interesting dynamics in '21, and previously in '20. Our superintendent is still energetic, fired up, and giving everything she has to this process, and I thank this board. And please have a very happy holiday, and we'll see you. Mr. Dr. Gupta, please.
Is it possible to get electronic PDF file of these?
If you can get electronic documents, and so I hate to let you go, but we need to do it. [laughter]